Good evening, if we could call the regular board meeting of Tuesday, February 3 to order. We are being video and audio recorded thanks to Helen's technology this evening. If we may have the opening prayer, Jason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We offer up our prayers this evening for the deceased members of our extended halt in Catholic system.
A reading from the letter to the Hebrews. Brothers and sisters, since we are surrounded by so great a cloud of witnesses, let us rid ourselves of every burden and sin that clings to us and persevere in running the race that lies before us while keeping our eyes fixed on Jesus, the leader and perfecter of faith. For the faith of the joy that lay before him, Jesus endured the cross, despising its shame, and has taken his seat at the right hand of the throne of God. Consider how he endured such opposition from sinners in order that you may not grow weary and lose heart. In your struggle against sin, you have not yet resisted to the point of shedding blood. The word of the Lord.
Running the race to have a share in Christ's victory, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path. For Christian assemblies gathered in prayer who run the race together, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path. For legislators and government leaders elected to secure the liberty and justice of all, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path. For athletes looked upon as models for our youth, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path. For teachers entrusted to enlighten the minds of our children, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path. For doctors and nurses trained to care for the sick and the dying, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path. For all of our deceased relatives and friends, that they may be granted life eternal, we pray. Oh Lord, keep us on your path.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy holy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, unto whom thou didst give heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but to the flesh for me. Thank you, Jason. Arlene, would you please, motions adopted in camera?
Thank you. From our human resources report, we have Martin Rakowski appointed as acting elementary principal at St. Peter Elementary School, effect of January 29, 2015, with an end date to be determined. We have John Colterman appointed as acting department head, effect of February 2, 2015, to June 30, 2015. And in hiring, we have Natalie Giorgio and Jessica Massial, hired as probationary teachers, effect of January 30, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a mover for the approval of the agenda this evening? Trustee Marai, seconded, trustee Intimasi, all in favor? Thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none, we have no presentations and we have no delegations. May I have a mover for the approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting of January 20? Trustee Rowe, seconded by trustee Quinn, all in favor? Thank you. Before you have the summary of the outstanding items from previous meetings. Any questions? No? And we have our action item, Oakville Secondary Schools, and Superintendent Cipriano is going to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you I present this action report regarding the Oakville Secondary Schools' boundary review. At the November 18, 2014, regular meeting of the board, trustees approved Board Resolution Number 147-14, which resolved that the Director of Education prepare a staff report regarding a review of the current programs and pupil accommodations for all Oakville schools. On December 16, 2014, the Director of Education presented a staff report to the Board of Trustees outlining a five-step process to review and address program and accommodation needs for Oakville Elementary and Secondary Schools. The five steps are all outlined in the action report presented to you now. These five steps were approved by the Board of Trustees as per Board Resolution Number 16-15. Step one, the review of elementary and secondary program offerings in Oakville, to determine potential efficiency in program delivery or gaps in program offerings. And step two, updating the elementary and secondary student enrollment forecast for Oakville, requires staff to review existing school boundaries, program offerings, enrollment trends, and school accommodations to fully assess the program needs in the context of facility needs in Oakville. In reviewing the student enrollment forecast for the town of Oakville, it's evident that there are continued accommodation pressures at St. Thomas Aquinas Secondary School, exacerbated by the new residential housing development projected in North Oakville, which is the housing north of Highway 5. This pressure, combined with the continuing trend of declining enrollment at St. Ignatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School and Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School, necessitates staff to recommend that a secondary school attendance boundary review be conducted for Oakville Secondary Schools. The results of this boundary review would be implemented for the 2016-2017 school year. However, to meet registration timelines, as students register in grade eight for grade nine in the fall, the process would need to be completed and board-approved by June 2015. The recommended boundary review will meet all the requirements prescribed in operating policy I-29, school boundary review process, including community input and participation. This process will also take into consideration any possible future school accommodation reviews anticipated at the elementary school level in Oakville. With that in mind, I present the following recommendation resolution before you, that the Houghton Catholic District School Board conduct a school boundary review process for the Oakville Secondary School panel to address growing accommodation pressures and program needs to be implemented for the 2016-2017 school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the report.
So, Madam Chair, I'm not sure how we can make this decision without a discussion of the statistics, the numbers, the trends, and more of a rationale for doing a boundary review. I think there was one done fairly recently, if I'm mistaken. I'd like to be corrected, thanks.
Are you going to answer that now, or do you want the questions first? Jacomo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last boundary review was, I believe, in 2008, that we did for the Oakville Secondary Boundary Review, when we established the boundaries for St. Thomas. And I think as the report indicates, we do know the trends now that we do have a situation that within the next year, we will have a situation where portables were required at STA, and we have declining enrollment at Loyola and Holy Trinity. Now seems the opportune time, in the light of the motion passed by the trustees, to move forward with this boundary review as was directed by the trustees.
Thank you. Diane, and then Paul, please.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to someone, I guess Superintendent Capaccia, though Superintendent Cipriano, I guess, wrote the report. Just like to ask why the elementary schools are not included in the motion. I understand the need for secondary, but given the growth in North Oakville and the need for accommodation for students in North Oakville, we believe that, at least I believe, that the ministry will not give us money while we have not done a boundary review of the elementary schools so that we can consolidate our numbers and our accommodation. And so I'm just wondering that why it is sort of included in the text, it is not specifically included in the motion? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. The current, the pressure, the immediate pressure points are at the secondary level. I'm under the impression that this is a first step, is trying to create a more balanced boundary at the secondary level with not changing the elementary boundaries in any way at this moment, but just redirecting elementary, possibly, redirecting certain elementary schools into certain areas, certain regions, into certain secondary schools, with the understanding that that could be a possibility after this first step for the, to move towards an elementary boundary review.
Yeah, so I understand that the last boundary review, secondary boundary review for Oakville was before 2010, but St. Mary's required us to make changes by the fact that it's a new school, to move, I believe it changed the catchment area above Dundas, as well as obviously the new area that was built there. When we were discussing that back in 2012, which was only a few years ago, I'm under the impression that we were told that we thought there wouldn't be enough student population at STA, and that's why we actually sent those students from North Oakville down to the south. So I'm just wondering what has caused this change? And if it's IB, it's IB, but I think we need a few more specifics on the scope of the secondary change. Is it looking at just north of Dundas? Is it looking at St. Mary's, or is it looking at Holy Family? What schools actually are in play? Or are you in fact looking at changing where the majority of elementary schools go?
Jacomo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, we do not want to forecast any conclusions. We're looking at all the boundaries for the three secondary schools only. Back in 2008, when we established the boundaries for St. Thomas, it was in the understanding that eventually that those students north of Dundas would probably redirect to their own secondary school in that north of Dundas boundary. The success of St. Thomas is evident by the enrollment numbers. They're very high, and if we go with the continued boundaries, we will have, we will require portables at St. Thomas, and we want to avoid portables at one school and several empty classrooms at both secondary schools. So that's the purpose of it. It's quite possible that St. Mary's and those north of Dundas would be the most likely schools, boundaries that would be moved out of St. Thomas. But at this point, it would be, we couldn't make that prediction at this point. We have to go through the process, through policy I-29, establishing a committee of school council representatives, and we would present different options to the advisory committee as well as to the community and have some discussion. So it's part of a process. We really don't know exactly what that trend is. What we do know is that St. Thomas is going to require portables by September of '16, and it's evident that the other two schools are in declining enrollment. So we want to do some boundary adjustments. Again, as per the motion that was approved by the trustees, this is what the direction was, was to review elementary, secondary school program offerings and update elementary enrollment forecasts for Oakville. That's part of this process, and we're moving forward with that.
Paul?
And, but to Diane's point, wouldn't it make a lot more sense to be looking at the elementary schools as well, or first, in conjunction with the secondary schools and one time?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is an option, but at this point, the immediate concern is the boundaries related to the secondary schools. The elementary schools will fall into place. The elementary boundaries are remaining as is. So if boundaries are moved, the entire elementary boundary would go to a family of schools, secondary school encompassing. We wouldn't take a secondary school and split, an elementary school and split up at this point, unless that information would come forward through our review. But it's a separate process and a secondary process.
Okay.
So, but my, I guess, just to clarify one statement you made, it's not that the projections back in 2012 were so off, it's that the new high school wasn't, we don't have a new high school coming online north of Dundas. Is that correct?
Sorry, repeat the question?
So, it's not that the projections of the students going down to STA from St. Mary's and north of Dundas were off, it's that we expected a high school to be built north of Dundas by this period of time to alleviate the constraints?
We did, the projections are happening as we predicted at St. Thomas. They're a little quicker than we anticipated, and we suspect that is due to the IB program. But the secondary school isn't on books for north of, sorry, not in the, on the projections, north of Dundas for another five, six, seven years. We still have no elementary school at this point north of Dundas, so it would be too premature to look at a secondary school. What we're trying to do is to ensure that our secondary students are in brick-and-mortar facilities as opposed to portable classrooms. That's what we're trying to tend to do. And we will look at the elementary boundaries as well, but the first step is to tackle the imbalance with the secondaries, and then we'll move forward with the elementary program.
I have a question, trustee Danko, trustee Quinn, and trustee Intimasi.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just, I understand that there could be a rationale to rebalance the population between the schools, but why can't a report like this show the numbers? The current enrollment, what's expected to happen in September? You know, for the ratepayers who might read our reports and our meeting minutes to understand what it is. I mean, we have all kinds, I mean, we're a data gathering institution. I think that governments collect data and statistics, and enrollments are a key figure in school boards, so why can't a report like this contain those kinds of numbers so that the rationale can just be easily seen and plainly seen as opposed to just asking for a boundary review off the top?
Superintendent, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Danko is absolutely correct. We can wait another two weeks to move forward with this process to provide the current boundaries and enrollments, and I think it would demonstrate to the board the concerns that staff have at this point. So, we wanted to move forward with the establishment of the school council representative committee, advisory committee, but we could wait another two weeks to approve this motion or to reconsider this motion when we provide further information to the trustees. And we could have that out later this week, or early next week, clearly as a format that's appropriate for the trustees.
Further?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move that we defer this approval for another two weeks for the next board meeting, please.
Seconded by trustee Marai, all in favor? And it's passed. Did you have a question further? No? Arlene?
Just an information clarification, because I can't recall. The parents that are on the committee for the boundary review, are we doing things any different than we've done in the past? Or are we consulting with family of school chairs as well? I'd just like some clarification as to how many parents would be on this committee and how it moves from there.
And who would like to answer? Jacomo?
Question more appropriate for the school superintendents, but essentially we'll follow the same process as I-29. A letter is sent out to the school community through the principal and informing the school council, to, in this case, to nominate two representatives and an alternate from each elementary family of school, including the secondary schools, to be on this committee.
Yes, Joe?
I just kind of wanted to confirm, if the boundaries are changed, does it affect the existing students, or is it just registration?
And typically, we do not disturb students who are already at the school itself. So if a student currently is attending School A, and the boundary from School A changes such that those students would be impacted, they'd be allowed to remain at the school until they graduate, typically. But again, that all depends on the outcomes of the study and the recommendations from the parent advisory committee as well.
Chloe?
If the boundaries are changed, do the students who are not supposed to be in that zone would go to School A, do they still have busing, or will the busing be taken away from them?
Jacomo?
Again, it would be the same process. We would use the grandparenting option as granted to students that are currently at the school, and we would make every effort to mitigate the impacts on those existing students at that school, if they're impacted by the boundary. Again, it would be premature to make that statement without going through the process, without hearing from the school council advisory committee, and of course, the trustees make the final decision as to what the actual outcome would be.
Joe?
I was just wondering, because one of STA's assets is the IB program, is it possible to get the IB program at one of the other schools who are declining in registration, or is that just exclusive to STA's area?
Paul?
Through you, Madam Chair. Obtaining an IB-certificated program takes a couple of years and some training. At rate now, it's almost, it's very difficult to get more than one program in a district. We haven't explored that in another area, especially if it's in the same, in the same town. So, and I would defer that more detail to Superintendent Pennelli, but we can, we can bring that question or answer back for you. She has more detail on the specifics around starting an IB program when we already have one in the district. Okay?
Helena?
Through you, Madam Chair. I was just looking at the numbers that we did receive about the enrollment, so...
Paul?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not certain of what information is being referred to, which numbers were distributed, because if, or if it's the October report, or this month's report, that's the current enrollment. What trustee Danko was requesting is what's the future projection for the next five years or beyond? And if that information would clearly indicate the trend of rising enrollment at St. Thomas and declining at Loyola and Holy Trinity. So we'll bring that forward to you later this week or beginning of next week. Frederick, our planner, has that information. We'll provide that information to you forthwith.
Trustee Marai?
Just in regards to that, and having the capacities of the schools as well, obviously would be included in that. Okay.
Any other questions? Trustee Quinn? The answer is yes. So this whole action item will be deferred until the next board meeting of February 17? Is that correct? February 17, thank you. There are no staff reports. Information items, 10.1, student trustee update? No? See, I'm going from this, yes? Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the beginning of every month, the student trustees put together a report of what's happening in our districts regarding, under the three pillars, believing, achieving, and belonging. So tonight, I will be reporting what's happening in our districts under the pillar of achieving. So at Holy Trinity, the mathematics contest participants were recognized for their 2014-2015 school year. Veronica Lee was the winner of the Canadian Intermediate Mathematics Contest. And our honorable mentions go out to Cameron Gesner and Thomas Sisterna. I have to apologize, I don't know how to pronounce his name. I think it's Zeng Huan Li? I want, yeah. Winner of the Canadian Senior Mathematics Contest. And honorable mentions go out to Brian Dovligadis, James Ingman, and Julia Sirialio. And Julia Sirialio was also the winner of the Canadian Open Mathematics Challenge. Honorable mentions go out to Brian Dovligadis, David Hostel, and Frida Morcos. At STA, their school is focusing on integrating Kindles, iPads, and Chromebooks into their math and English curriculums. At Signis of Loyola, the Knights of Columbus Christmas dinner just passed. Two of our students were recognized for their works. Michelle Crissini was honored for her drawing that was created for the Keep Christ in Christmas campaign. The drawing has been reproduced and sent to all the Catholic elementary schools in Oakville. As well as Tina Huang's design was selected to be the 2014 holiday card for Oakville MVP Kevin Flynn. 9,000 cards with Tina's design were printed for distribution. And I will turn it over to Jason, who is reporting on believing. Okay, so first we've got Notre Dame, who's hosting...
Okay, so tonight, I am reporting under the pillar of belonging. So as we know, belonging is basically coming together and doing something, whether it be charitable or having some good old spirited fun. So the last two weeks of January, students have been, were pushing through and struggling... and struggling and cramming in for exams as you all know, for those of you who have teenagers in school, um, where they should be. Um, um, so with that, um, Christ the King, they held a Zumba class in their atrium to help students kind of blow off steam and to help them relax and, you know, to get that stress off of exams and all that. So that was very nice, which BR did that. Um, the tutoring program led by the leadership class at that school, um, they wrapped up their mentoring for the semester, um, where they mentored the grade nines as well. And then, um, they are also planning for their girls' night in and their boys' night in. For those of you who don't know that, it's where, um, you spend the evening at school going through workshops about empowering, like empowering, empowering yourself, um, how you, to make yourself successful, how to carry yourself in the world. And then it's usually followed by like a meal and then some sort of physical activity. So, um, usually for girls' night in, they have like a Zumba instructor come in and do all that jazz with the jazz hands. Um, so then continuing on, um, their best buddies held a field trip. And then as well, we at Bishop Reading, they started their best buddies program. So it's basically where a, um, student with special needs is almost paired up with like a mentor, like a peer or a friend, um, to kind of go through the whole school year with and to do activities with. So we kicked off our best buddies program, um, with having a tournament in the school gym. And JV, what Jean Vanier did was to wrap up their best buddies program for the semesters that they held a school dance where, um, best buddies from BR and then as well as JV came up together and they had a nice school dance. Um, and then that is it. So reporting, I'm also covering the general student trustee report. Um, so to start it off, we, um, have our diversity conference, our Black History Month conference coming up at the end of the month on February twenty-fourth. We're really celebrating Black History Month, um, to kind of conclude and kind of our big culminating event through the whole series of activities that we have, uh, planned throughout the month of February. Um, so then on February ninth, as a part of our Student Senate meeting, um, we are going to be coming together at Jean Vanier in the evening to show the Last Night, um, The Last White Night, sorry, and that is movie talking about racism as well. Um, and then, but throughout the day, in the morning at Bishop Reading and then in the afternoon at BR, uh, in the afternoon at Jean Vanier, we're going to be showing, um, Prom Night in Mississippi. Um, so that's basically a movie showcasing how in, in a school in Mississippi, they still have segregated proms where they have proms for white students and then a prom for black students. And Morgan Freeman comes forward and he says that I will pay for a prom if you guys have it together. So that movie just basically, um, shows what they go through and the steps that they go through, um, to make that happen. And then we're also going to have the director of that movie come out and lead a discussion with the students, um, both for the afternoon and the morning showing. Um, as you know, we're still brainstorming activities for our Catholic Youth Day, um, so the activities following our, uh, provincial-wide Mass, the Second Annual. Um, so we're still coming up with ideas of, with our Student Senate of what elementary school students and high school students can do. And to wrap it up, we have our submission for the Keeping the Flame Alive, which is the, um, CBC, OSTA magazine. Um, so I have it on the little USB and hopefully if technology is cooperating with me tonight, I can show you, um, what we are submitting to OSTA. Um, so this is what we will be submitting to the CBC magazine. Um, so we kind of came up together as trustees in the Senate and this is what we will be giving to them. Um, so yeah, so as you can see, it was very nicely done by, obviously, a talented student in our board. Um, and to just wrap it up, on, uh, again, on behalf of the students in Halton, we would like to thank, um, Ms. Michaels and Ms. Dawson for the snow day yesterday. Um, whoever called and all the people who participated in making that decision. Just know that every student in our school board had a smile on their faces. So thank you.
Wants to bring it to everyone's attention that it's not Paula, it's God we have to thank. Thank you, trustees. Uh, I did read today in, in someone's newsletter that they were asking for applications for new student trustees. Does that mean your term is coming to an end?
Uh, we actually start the application process really soon. Um, so I believe they're due to the principals by, um, it's March. Okay, so March and then, um, in April, we have, um, our elections take place through the Student Senate. Um, but yes, we are starting to look for new trustees home.
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, ten point two lists all the, the many educational field trips that have been approved. Um, I believe if anyone has any questions, any of the superintendents can speak to that.
Yeah, these sound like wonderful trips and a lot of, a lot about leadership and, and spiritual development. And the one that intrigues me is, um, the Queen of Heaven trip in Milton. They will immerse themselves in activities that develop their understanding of human dignity. And I'd just like to know exactly what would that be? I'm just very impressed by that. Versus, you know, all the other ones are about leadership and geography, drama, physical education, so this one really stands out.
Lori?
Well, typically, a lot of the, um, the leadership types of things that they do with the students would promote human dignity and solidarity together. Um, Tony's away today, but she would have the details of the trip information if you wanted more, more of the description of the actual activities that promote it. But the camps are very, um, effective at, um, leading different activities that bring the kids to an understanding about solidarity and human dignity through a variety of ways. So they come at it in, in a number of ways, but walk away with a deeper understanding. But if you'd like, we can get more information on that specific trip.
Any other questions? No? Uh, we have next, uh, Black History Month activities listed. And Superintendent Negro, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Black History Month is a time for all Halton Catholic students, teachers, staff, and trustees to reflect on and honor in a very special way the Black Diaspora in Canada. Its past struggles and what we might see as future triumphs, especially those of our students. We celebrate accomplishments of Black Canadians, but also remind ourselves of the continuing issues that still exist in our society around racism and inequality. I want to highlight just, uh, a few elements of the report. And in the first paragraph, you'll see the partnerships that we've built with some of our community organizations, including the Burlington Caribbean Connection and the Canadian Caribbean Association of Halton. We're very proud of these relationships. Uh, these are great or, uh, local organizations. And all of our students benefit from our, um, uh, alliance with them. So our Black History events kickoff on February fifth. There are actually two events. Um, one is at the Oakville Town Hall and it's sponsored by the CCAH. And the other is actually not on your notes. Uh, it's at Robert Bateman and it's the Burlington Caribbean Connection, uh, putting on its kickoff event. They have invited us to both and I would be happy to, uh, provide further details to any trustee who would like to join those events on that evening. Chloe already mentioned to you about the events on February ninth with Oakville's own Paul Saltzman, the director of both of those movies, joining us. You'll remember that last year, these two movies were shown, uh, sorry, this, Prom Night was shown in our Burlington schools. We're moving a little northward and, uh, hitting, uh, Vanier this time. We've also chosen Vanier as a central location, uh, such that we can transport some of our students to this event, um, and, and make it central to, uh, to, uh, parents in the evening as well. So the transportation of students actually happens on February twenty-fourth in the event that's been, uh, really led by our students in terms of the planning. So just to give you an idea of who the guests are that day, we have Carl Suban as the keynote. That's, uh, PK's dad, most notably known as. Uh, he'll be there to talk about dreaming big. And we have students, uh, with cultural presentations as well as a panel discussion. Uh, and so we will be bussing students in from all of our secondary schools for that event. Uh, there are tickets available to the BCC Gala and Awards Night. Some of you joined us last year in this really festive night and you're, you're invited to attend, uh, again, if you can make it. Um, and you'll see the rest of the events. I'm very happy to see a lot of, um, social media presence, um, to, to talk about Black History Month. Some of you have been involved. I've noticed some of your tweets, uh, looking at some, some Black accomplishments in Canada. We will continue those daily. Each, uh, our communications department will be tweeting one Black History tweet a day for the rest of the month. And so we've had, we have a, a nice lineup of events. You are invited to any or all of them that you can attend. And just in closing, uh, we just note that Black History Month is a really a new beginning to a full year worth of remembering that Black history is part of our own Canadian history. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
If I can remember correctly, last year the kickoff was plagued with a snowstorm.
And a power outage.
That was the gala night. We had, as we were lining up for food, lights went out.
Yes.
Sorry, any, any questions? Yes, Anthony?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the reports, Superintendent. Uh, I just had a question on the, the role of the consultant for settlement and multiculturalism. I see the note submitted, a report submitted by Mary Ann Salvo. Can you tell me about the consultant's role in your report?
Certainly. Uh, that particular position is a CIC, Citizenship Immigration Canada-funded position. It is very, um, specifically tied to newcomer families and to settlement in our board. So our board has been allocated one such position by Citizenship and Immigration Canada. The co-terminals board actually has two. And they are also playing a role, um, CIC is, in supporting the establishment of our Welcome Center. We are one of the boards experiencing the most growth of newcomers in the province. And so CIC assists with the parental portion of that. And so the role of that person is to really make sure that not only the students are well taken care of, but that, that, uh, parents of those students are connected to newcomer resources, uh, employment, healthcare, and other support services in the region that will help them, uh, begin their lives in Canada. It is a full-time position.
Uh, next we have the response, uh, to the request of what the involvement of the Public Health Department has in our schools and that is, uh, Superintendent Overhall, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, the report before you, again, uh, does give a response in regards to our involvement of the Public Health Department in our schools. The Halton Health Department has had a longstanding relationship with our school board and the schools and various programs that have been developed and expanded over time. Listed in the report are the main areas in which they are involved with our schools, uh, with descriptors. I won't go over in detail all the descriptors, but I will go over the main areas. Uh, they are immunizations, school absenteeism tracking, uh, oral health, air quality and climate change education, and school years program support for all of our schools. One of the goals of the Renewed Vision for Education Ontario was a promotion of child and student well-being. Um, and one of the goals was an important mandate for, uh, school boards and health departments to have a shared responsibility in regards to that. So Ontario Boards of Health, um, work with school boards and staff of publicly funded elementary and secondary schools, uh, to create or enhance programs and environments and influence the development and implementation of healthy policies. Further to that, uh, the Council of Ontario Directors of Education and the Council of Medical Officers of Health have formed a provincial partnership committee. Um, their mandate was to help, uh, again, the well-being of Ontario's children and students and to build on a collaborative and sustainable partnership between school boards and the boards of health. Uh, this joint committee has, uh, had a few meetings thus far, um, in which they looked at projects and priorities. And the committee has also discussed and collaborated on a number of areas of mutual interest, including immunizations, concussion policy, and partnership agreements between boards and, uh, of health and school boards. Uh, it is recommended by this committee that by September of twenty fifteen, all boards and boards of health establish and maintain a written partnership agreement to support a mutually beneficial working relationship between the local school boards and the pu- public health, uh, units. Um, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions in regards to, uh, to the report.
Trustee Danko?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm glad for this, uh, uh, brief report. Uh, I guess, um, the only problem I have with it is that it's, that it's so brief. I thought there was a much more extensive relationship. Actually, um, the other more thing I'm more concerned about is, um, that we're just hearing about this code, C-O-M-O-H, committee uh, for the first time now after they've been meeting since twenty thirteen and that we are, they are recommending that we move into a binding agreement with them by September. And I'm just very concerned that our director would enter into a, a binding agreement, uh, such as that, without our knowledge, without any discussion. Um, if the co-, if the committee has met several times, what issues are they discussing? What are their meeting reports like? And why haven't we ever seen a report brought to the board until now? And in, in a very, um, casual question brought up at the last meeting, uh, we're seeing a very far-reaching, what it's, what seems like a very far-reaching, uh, comprehensive partnership agreement.
Director Dawson?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, I was made aware of this, uh, committee in December, late, early December. So, and I believe I shared that, uh, recently at a board meeting. Um, so there is not, uh, the outline of the agreement is not firmed up yet and the details, you'll see that they're going to be sharing that, um, with, with this committee and then out to directors. It's not firmed up in stone. So, uh, of course, I would bring a report when all those details are, are brought forward in the spring of twenty fifteen.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the director.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, the committee would make recommendations to, uh, each regional of, like, each regional partnership. And then there'd be probably a number of different items that each partnership would need to discuss as norms or things that they would work on together. I don't have those details. All I have is, is what's before you and all that will come out in, uh, in the spring. So I would definitely let you know... that will come out in the spring. So I would definitely let you know if there is, what the details are for, what the partnership would be formed by, and then we can discuss that here.
Susan?
Would it be possible to, where would we have access? Or is it possible to ask for the minutes of the meetings or any ancillary information that's already taken place? Do you know what's gone past if you were made aware of it in December? Do you know the previous meetings from autumn of 2013? Okay. Would we be able to get that? Or you could direct us?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd have to ask for that. What I've provided for you is that is all that I'm aware of at this point. So I could ask for their minutes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Helena came to me previous and told me that she had Googled this on her own, and she came up with...
You can just Google in the acronyms, and it pops up quite a comprehensive partnership that's going on since 2013. I'd be wise to see and who's involved and how far-reaching it is and it seems. And I'd be interested in the minutes to understand, like, what are they seeing as their priorities and what are they seeing as their project for our schools?
Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. I cannot speak specifically to the committee. However, if I look at a couple of the areas in which the committee has worked on, such as immunizations panorama and the concussion policy, it came directly from the ministry, that it was expected that the health departments were part of those areas to working with school boards and other partners in regards to moving forward with those initiatives.
Trustee Anthony, trustee Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But going back to what the original purpose of this question was as well, I mean, the relationship that we have with our local health unit is one that is going on already. And I think that what I was hoping for in this report was a more detailed overview or report on the extent of that relationship. So, I mean, I know, for example, that we share enrollment numbers or people or students who are going into grade eight, who are eligible, the timing of their vaccinations, that type of thing. What sort of protocols are in place? What is the extent of the relationship? I mean, we spent quite a considerable amount of time, and I thought it was worthwhile to discuss the concussion protocol. So I think that before we are informed about this agreement that we're going to decide upon hopefully in September or for September, that we have an understanding of what is going on in our schools with regards to our relationship with the health unit.
Trustee Quinn? Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. I guess from my understanding of the report, it was in regards to the programming that was going on with the Halton Health Department. If it's further in regards to other areas, I'd be more than happy to find out what those areas are. But I guess I'd need more detail as to what specifics you're looking at in regards to our working relationship is with the Halton Health Department? Or is it more legalities that we're looking at?
Trustee Quinn? How are we going to word that? Any ideas? What you're looking for? Trustee Carewell?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just for me, I had some other questions that maybe this could help decipher what we're looking at, just under the school years program, so public health and...
Trustee Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's the will of the trustees. It may be worthwhile to have the Halton Health Department come in and do a presentation if that would help in regards to answer some of the questions that they have.
Susan?
Just to further define it, maybe mandates. Like, I have the same question about the public health nurse. There would have to be a mandate written down somewhere, whether it's old or new, or it's being devised under this current COD and C-O-M-O-H. But there has to be mandate somewhere, maybe, if that's a good place to start.
I think Director Dawson spoke to that before. Remember when we were talking about Elizabeth Bowers at the ministry was going to look into that, but she said it would take some time? All right. Shall we have them come in and speak to us? What is the will? Anthony?
Madam Chair, I don't think it's necessary that, at this point, for someone to visit us. I mean, I think it's understood on a day-to-day basis what occurs, what sort of interaction the health unit has with us, and what the existing programs are and the details of those. Which policies of ours govern those relationships right now? What is the current situation and extent of the board's relationship with the health unit so that we can be prepared to make a good decision on the upcoming agreement that we're being asked to approve?
Anyone else like to speak to this?
Through you, Madam Chair, just to clarify. So all of these things that are in here for, under the headings, for example, school year supports, you're looking for a detailed descriptor of what exactly happens in those particular programs. Am I reading the will of the trustees here? So we will look at getting some information from Halton Health so that we can provide descriptors. In terms of the extent of the relationship between the board and the health department, these are the broad areas. If you need descriptors of what immunizations happen, when, like more specific details, we could get that too.
I think the letter forthcoming from Dr. McGanney is exactly what will give us more information about immunization. She's going to give us a descriptor of exactly what the protocol is when they come into the schools. So that would be that covered.
I don't want to waste trustees' time. I want to make sure that we get it right for you on the next one. And I just want to make sure that when we're talking about legal responsibilities, consent, we can outline that as well. But when you want the details, for example, school absentee tracking, how that's handled, you want sort of, what do they do in terms of handling those things? And what do they do with the data? What are the outcomes when that happens? I think that's the mandate for tracking that. Am I reading that?
Trustee Overholt?
I could speak to that. The meningitis C is not offered by doctors. It is either through a health clinic or at the schools. Anytime an immunization is done, when the registration's coming in, those immunization records are photocopied and sent to the health department. They have, under the Immunization Act, the right to have those records and that information. If they are, the immunizations are taking place within the school, the public health nurses are there. They are recording that information, and it goes into their files at that point in time, and that documentation is kept at that time. If they are having that information, sorry, that immunization outside of the school, then that has to be brought, when they register at the secondary level, that has to be brought to the secondary before they're allowed in and, again, sent to the health department.
Helena?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to confirm then, which of the vaccines listed here are required to enter the school? The hepatitis and the meningitis only?
Not hepatitis, just the meningitis. There's a list of other immunizations that are required that are usually, happen before a child enters school. So there is a list that I don't have here. The only other one that is mandatory is the meningitis.
I just also had one question regarding, I don't know where I read it here, that they have an E...
Through you, Madam Chair. These E newsletters go to the schools, and principals disseminate as to what information that they feel is worthwhile putting in newsletter. But if trustees do want that, I could probably be able to get that link for you so that you would be aware of that information. No.
Is that it then? Thank you. Construction reports. Superintendent Corbaccio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is essentially a housekeeping item. It's the final report for the St. Francis CC FTK project. All the work is completed. The students are in the new addition, and the contractors will be in throughout the rest of the school year doing minor deficiencies and commissioning of the building. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you. Seeing none. We move, there's no correspondence. We don't need to go back in camera. We have no absentees. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. CAC minutes of January 12th are here. For your information, if there are any questions, oh, they're not on my hard copy. Sorry, Paul. Is there any questions in the CAC minutes? Seeing none. We have no absentees. And we have a closing prayer. Just checking. Paul Marai?
And just before we begin, a fun fact. There are, yeah, fun fact. Because number 17, if you Google a snow day prayer, it comes up with 18,600,000 hits. But I didn't think it would be appropriate to, for the season. So if we can begin with a sign of our faith. "Lord, you invite all who are burdened to come to you. Allow your healing hand to heal me. Touch my soul with your compassion for others. Touch my heart with your courage and infinite love for all. Touch my mind with your wisdom, that my mouth may always proclaim your praise. Teach me to reach out to you in my need, and help me to lead others to you by my example. Most loving heart of Jesus, bring me health in body and spirit, that I may serve you with all my strength. Touch gently this life which you have created now and forever. Amen."
And I have a ticket note for a motion to adjourn, please. Helena, seconded by Susan, all in favor. Thank you.